Was the cleanup and community revitalization. And I will let council members who co-chaired that. Mr. Prater, you were on the prime committee.
Prime committee.
So you did your report. So that's where we are with that. Are there any announcements from council members in reference to your districts?
Well, Mayor, we have gone through, worked with engineers, and identified the top two problem payment in the side of the city. We also are still on target to take care of the bridge opening. Uh, that, uh, gee, somebody help me with that.
Martin Luther King.
Martin Luther King, yeah. And we have, uh, we'll be following up with them. They've committed to the end of this month, the end of where they are. So anyway, it's ready.
Okay. Are there any other district announcements?
I want to come in. Mr. Green, Public Works, uh, some of the projects, they've been working on it. They've been doing a great job, so I want to come in down. Such a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Prater.
I also have one announcement. I just want to thank the people in District A. Just riding the streets, I've identified some projects, and I've talked to constituents, and some of them have taken it upon theirself to go ahead and clean up their property, which is really commendable. And that prevents me from having to actually, you know, bother Public Works because I know they're working short. So I just want to thank some of my constituents in District A for doing such a phenomenal job.
Thank you. Are there any other? Mr. Green, you had a nice, long list. You want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I put together a list, but it was about two months ago, back in August, about problems identified in my district. And the public works have been working through. Matter of fact, they was in front of the Waltham Moore shop today.
Uh huh.
So I do appreciate you guys.
Thank you so much.
Because I'm going to like District D too.
Absolutely. Can't forget the district that we represent. Okay, that concludes our announcements.
We got another now. Uh, Mr. Green's birthday. Did I recognize his birthday today?
Yes, let's do that.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
It was a present, like you guys.
Hey, your mama took you to bring you a day old cake.
I eat it like it was, it did today.
I didn't say that, Dee Dee.
I know you did.
Fresh cake.
All right, just as long as you don't ask me to sing "Happy Birthday." I do wish you a happy birthday then. Oh, I sent you a text on your birthday. Okay. So I beat you to it, a little pain. All right, item number four. Approved minutes, regular meeting September 9th and special meeting September 23rd. At this time, I will entertain a motion on approval of minutes. Item number four.
I make a motion, Lord, I mean, Mayor, that we, uh, take care of the act for now, or as related to the previous minutes.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there?
Yeah.
There's a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda. Are there any public comments? Consideration of and action on reports of committees appointed of a governing authority. And I believe that brings us to the community revitalization SWAT analysis that was conducted. Mr. Green, Mrs. Tapping, did you all want to speak to that?
Yeah, we can. Um, we had our first meeting, and the first meeting we had was mainly just to identify the strengths and weaknesses of our city. Hopefully, the committee will be able to build on that, and we will be able to identify projects in each one of our districts, and hopefully work together so we can get this community cleaned up. That's what it's all about.
Mr. Green, did you want to add anything?
It was perfectly said.
Okay, all right. I believe we've just kind of addressed the other committees as we have, uh, gone through this agenda thus far. Item number seven, reports of city officials. Okay, we've done, that's number seven, isn't it? Okay. Item A, Finance Committee Report, Resolution 21-1972, Bills and Claims for the Month of August 2021.
Yeah, the correct one, that is supposed to be September.
September, okay. September, excuse, excuse me. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, the Finance Committee has reviewed the bills and claims for the month of September, and I make a motion that we accept the financial report.
Properly moved?
Second.
And second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to item number eight, action on ordinance and resolutions introduced at previous meeting. Ms. Goldman, anything?
Nothing we can have in previous, middle way, no.
Okay. Item number nine, honor other unfinished business. I'm going to table, A, Mr. Robert McGee wanted to come, but he had to fly out of town on an emergency, but he has requested to, uh, to address this body again, so we will table that action. Item number 10, introduction of and permitted action on proposed ordinances and resolutions. Ms. Goldman, A, Ordinance 21-4261, and ordinance authorized in the borrowing of the city, by the City of Bastrop, State of Louisiana, of not exceeding $700,000 by the issuance of its revenue anticipation note, Series 2021, providing for the payment thereon, providing for a pledge and dedication of taxes and other revenues of said city of security and payments thereof in principle and interest and other matters in connection therewith. Okay, this is for introduction. Ms. Goldman, you want to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am. This here is our loan that we borrow every year, and this is up for introduction. It's the standard amount, and next month we'll come before y'all with the bills and have the interest rate and everything. We usually borrow at this time of the year, but when we start taxes, getting our taxes in November, December, we pay it off in January. It's a short loan. Uh, and that's all, no action at all.
Okay, thank you. We've been doing this for how many years, Ms. Goldman?
About 20 years.
About 20 years? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Item B, Ordinance 20-4262, an ordinance to provide for the sale of adjudicated properties and further providing with respect thereto Kimberly Minnewether and E. Consulting Services, LLC, introduction only. We have representative here?
Yeah.
Okay, would you come, please?
Yes.
State your name, full name, yes, please. Thank you.
My name is Kimberly Minnewether, and I'm with EMP Consulting Services. Our office assists with the sale of adjudicated properties in several parishes, and we're also picking up, uh, different cities. And I'm here to talk to you today about our program and what we do. The sales process is initiated when interested purchasers come in to submit an application, and they also submit an administrative fee that covers all the legal work associated with securing the property. So the city will incur little to no cost in our honesty of the ads. We, we send our ads to the local paper to publish, uh, the sale, and that pretty much is all the expense that the city will incur.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Ms. Goldman and I did meet with a representative in respect to this, uh, company and what they have to offer. Are there any questions?
What, what difference would they do than Civic Source?
What difference? Um, we are more accessible, one-on-one contact for any questions that you all may have. What I love most about our, our program is I hear you all speaking on community revitalization, and so we work with code enforcement. Say, for instance, a particular property is blighted and the tax is having been paid, we locate buyers to handle that expense. That way, the city doesn't have to pay Public Works to clean it up, because that's passed on to that interested purchaser.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Any other questions? Why we have a representative here? Okay, speaking to the pros and cons with adjudicated properties, so often down through the years, the, the property value is in decline because of the deterioration. And then when we invest city dollars into it, and because it's so hard to get in touch with owners, we end up pouring good money after bad money. Would you agree?
Yes, ma'am, but that is actually what we do. When we get into the title work, we try to locate all heirs, our other parties with the vested interests for us, um, lien holders, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, again, like I said, those expenses are passed to someone else. You all wouldn't have to expend. In addition, I kind of wanted to brag tonight, um, we actually had two interested purchasers for a piece of property here, 1207 Cullen, that was adjudicated, and they put an application in months ago, waiting for us to just speak with you all about it, but it was recently redeemed. So I wanted to provide that example to say, it would have started off at the minimum bid, but, you know, going back and forth through the bidding process, that's a surplus of money. You all will receive all funds. For an example, a property in Washatah, the minimum bid was set at $2,000. We had about 10 participants register, and the bid went up to 26,500. Those funds were submitted to the parish to disperse at any rate that they wanted to. We don't collect anything but our fee.
Uh huh. And then the starting price bid was 2,000?
The minimum bid is based off taxes owed or two-thirds of the value, whichever is the lesser amount.
Okay.
And so in that situation, uh, the tax bill was the cheaper amount. It was only $2,000, and we had so many people interested, they ran the bid up.
Hmm.
Now the property has been cleaned up, put back into commerce.
That's great. Mr. Pierre, did you want to weigh in on that in terms of, um, pros and cons for the city?
Well, one pro I see is that anytime we can get some properties on the tax roll, that's going to be a benefit for the city, perhaps that could reduce all the borrowing that we have to do every year and waiting on, uh, taxes to come in so that we can pay that loan. So I mean, I always see a benefit in trying to get properties on a tax roll.
One question, Mr. Pierre, would this company replace Civic Source, or they work in conjunction?
It would, it wouldn't.
Civic Source has a, has a contract with the City of Bastrop, but not replace Civic Source.
And how long is the contract with Civic Source?
Civic Source? I'd have to go back and look.
I have it in my office. You want me to go get it?
We can just.
But it's, it's not, it's not a replacement.
No, it's not.
All right.
And I think one of the, one of the things that I think came up, and if you go off and recall, a couple of years ago, several years ago, when Civic Source came in, before you all, one of the concerns was that, that minimum, they had a lot of administrative costs inside of their, uh, their figures.
Right.
And it, it raised the minimum bid up, and it did not make it attractive for individuals to purchase the property, uh, because they probably thought they wasn't getting their money's worth. So that was one of the, I guess, the problems with the process as it was then. Uh, but this is not a replacement, to answer your question.
Okay. Let's go.
So the city would have the right to choose who would administrate the property, each property? How would that work?
Well, Civic Source has a contract right now to sell all of the adjudicated property.
Uh huh.
So ultimately, at some point in time, well, all the properties that are out there that's subject to adjudication, uh, at some point in time, uh, I'm certain that you all will evaluate that and see whether or not that's, you do your own cost benefit analysis as the council to determine whether or not you're going to go with Civic Source or another company, but they have, they provide additional services other than sell adjudicated property. I think they have some kind of combined effect, uh, with collections and things of those nature. But that, uh, that's the sum of the subservice, not a replacement, but with, uh, this particular party is asking, you also allow her to help you all sell these properties.
Civic Source don't handle any of our adjudicated property at all. They just do the delinquent. That's all.
But the tax, yeah.
All right, thank you.
May I add one thing? Our administrative fee is $1,000, and the interested purchaser pays that. So any surplus money would actually go to the city. I know we have, uh, we recently acquired Morehouse Parish. It hasn't even been a year, and we already have 20-plus properties pending.
Now, who is working with, uh, with the group that handles Civic Source? Who, who, who give it? Do we give them direction, or do we not?
Yes, sir, they follow the law, yes, sir. It's basically what, when they step in is when it starts becoming delinquent. When it's not paid by December 31st, that's a delinquent. And then they do the advertisement and everything. Keep up with the certified letters, all that's on. And as it goes according to the law, they handle all that. Then once, if there's a piece of property that is not paid, they handle the, the, the property sale itself, not selling the land, but selling the fact that they were delinquent. Once they do that, bidders go online, but to actually buy adjudicated, we, we tried that, and it didn't work, and we canceled the part of the contract adjudicated sale. And we've not gone with anybody until this company here come in. We knew that the parish was checking them out. We just waited to see how it was going to work. They have nothing but good things to say. We met with them, and we think it's a win, because during this time, people write us letters all the time, and what we do is we tell them to write a letter to the mayor requesting it with a tax assessment. They have to go over there, bring us the property they want to buy, that where it's no misunderstanding. And we probably got 12 or 15. I've given them copies of that, of those individuals that says, "I want to buy this property." So when we met with them, I gave her that stack, and she said, "Well, you've already done part of our job." I said, "Well, we've just been collecting them." And these people are serious, because they call me all the time, and I told them, "Look, it's wait, and when the council votes to do it, they'll contact you and tell you what you've got to do to buy that."
Well, this sound like a win situation for us, for us to adjudicate property.
Yes, sir.
Can't go wrong.
Yes, sir.
Right. As Ms. Goldman was saying, that she sends the individuals over, we take the burden off of everyone. Uh, they don't have to run over and get it. Once they submit the application and the administrative fee, we request the tax bill, we look at the valuation, we do everything. We hold their hand from start to finish. All they have to do is sit back and wait until I call them, and it's time to close and pay their money.
Ms. Minnewether, would you speak to the title search? I know that can be an awesome task for potential buyers, and you all do the title search, which clears up titles and liens on properties?
Well, um, each parish and city actually gives a non-warranty deed. We do do the title search, and we file an affidavit in the record to demonstrate all the efforts we made to contact those individuals, what we found in the records, where we mail notices to, the publication dates, et cetera. So that's filed, but they do not have clear and marketable title. That's a whole nother process that individuals pay for. Um, so, yes, ma'am.
And sometimes owners have a certain timeframe in which they can come back and reclaim property.
That's another part of our process that I love. Even though we are hired to assist with the sales process, we love to educate people because a lot of times, people have a misconception, "Oh, we lost it." So when we send out that letter, that statutory notice saying, "Hey, the city is about to sell their interest. It's been adjudicated." We get calls, and either nine times out of 10, they're going to ignore the letter, or someone will call with a story. "This was my great-grandmother's property. My uncle was supposed to be paying the taxes. We lost it." And we will let them know, "No, you have an opportunity to redeem this property." Give them the redemption information, contact the tax, uh, collector's office, and let them know that these people are interested, and just guide them all the way through.
That's great. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, this is for introduction?
Yes, ma'am.
So there's no action to be taken tonight? Thank you so much for that presentation.
Thank you, all.
Thank you.
All right, that takes care of item, okay, other new business. A, Ms. Akers, Ms. Perkins, Cancer Center Prevention on the Go Program in Delta Region. We have representatives here. A, represent, uh, is it just you? Would you state your name, please?
I'm Myra Akers, and I'm with the Maryburg Perkins Cancer Center. And Maryburg Perkins Cancer Center is, thank you, 50 years old, but we have a prevention on the go program that had been operating in other parts of Louisiana until last year, and then they expanded their program into the Delta Region. And, uh, we've been here in Morehouse Parish twice doing screenings, and Mayor Olive's office has been gracious and helped us promote it. But I'm here tonight just to educate more people on what we're doing. We offer five cancers, uh, five types of cancer screenings, which is oral, prostate, colorectal, breast, and skin. And we don't do them all at every screening, but we do offer them from various times, and it's all free. We'll be having, um, Brady James is sponsoring one for mammograms and colorectal kits that will be on December 3rd, and it will be in the Monroe, Louisiana parking lot at Walmart. But we will be back here doing more of those. We, we've done some mammogram screenings here. But just want to get the word out, because it's not necessarily for people that cannot afford to have it done, that did not have insurance. It's for anyone that hasn't been screened, because of the pandemic, a lot of people have not been getting their screenings. And, you know, the mobile unit is clean, it's safe, and it's also for women that are used to go in and getting mammograms. You know, you know the drill. You go to the doctor and get the order, and then another day you take off work to go and get the actual screening done. This way, you get it all done at one time, and it's easy and quick and very safe. So if, um, I left y'all some literature, but if anybody knows of any organizations that I may need to connect with to do this, because we're here to stay, and we're going to keep going, and, you know, just contact me and let me know. Um, I know I do have a meeting with the, is it the Restoration of Hope, uh, soon, um, coming up in November, so they invited us to come. If anybody has any questions or anything, I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much for that presentation, as we wish to promote wellness in our community. Were there any questions from this body in regards to this presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Item B, Mr. Ricky Allen Anderson, Appointment of Chief of Police, Bachelor of Civil Service Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Madam Pro temp, gentlemen of the Bastrop City Council. Once again, I will be brief and directly to the point. I have addressed this to governing body on several occasion about the Bastrop Civil Service Board. I presented each of you with a package containing information about who, what, when, where, and why, and how this happened, related to my complaint, and my complaint only, against two Bastrop police officers, one retired and the other still present. My complaint has never been heard as of this date. Why? I'll tell you why my complaint was never heard. First of all, I never received a correspondent confirmation from the Bastrop Civil Service Board that they have received my letter of complaint, even though I hand-delivered it on May 3rd, 2021. Days and weeks passed, so I decided to visit the Bastrop City Clerk to find out that the Bastrop Civil Service Board had a hearing on June 3rd, 2021, where as discussion and actions of my complaint was tabled. The Bastrop Civil Service Board never corresponded with me about another hearing held on July 15th, 2021, where as the board member arrived late, just minutes before the hearing about to adjourn, this board member made a motion that no action be taken on this sworn letter of complaint by me. The board member who made that sworn motion was the chairman of the Civil Service Board that came late to the hearing. On August 24th, 2021, I received a letter from the Bastrop Service Service Board notifying me about an upcoming hearing of my complaint scheduled for September 2nd, 2021, in which I respond with a hand letter of no compliance and non-recognizable. Mayor Olive, you made a comment that the Bastrop Service Service Board went out their scope of their duties in the chief of police hearing, and I concur. I, too, see too much red tape and bureaucratic with the state civil service governing body and our local civil service governing body. For six hours on September 30th, 2021, I witnessed the Bastrop Civil Service Board conduct a hearing where pardonatories of errors during the hearing, whereas motions were made and second and left to die, because the discussion of another motion was made in a different matter, and continuing to address the first motion without any regards. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, the chair of this board beginning to debate with other chairmans, with other representative, about who has more knowledge about the law of civil service. They have their guidelines, and they have their rules and regulations, so each of one of them knows no better. I have also witnessed the chair leave the podium during a critical vote and begin to partake in assemblies with the person in question, the defendant. Mayor, city council members, we as a citizens deserve best of the best, and sometimes we fall short of being best of the best. When the evidence is there, you can't dispute it, but when the evidence isn't there, you must explain. Mayor Olive, with all due respect, did former acting assistant chief of police, Keishon Lynch, violate the police policy?
Wait just a minute, wait just, just, just a minute, just a minute, Mr. Anderson. Uh, we don't need to go into discussion personnel issues in a public forum.
I respect that, but I'm asking a question only.
Uh, we're.
You can deny, you can deny answering. You have that option.
Let's, let us not discuss personnel matters.
I'm not discussing personnel issues?
Mr. Anderson.
Proceeding with my order.
Mr. Anderson, go on to your next item, please.
Mayor Olive, did insubordination play a role in former acting assistant chief of police, Keishon Lynch, the motion back to captain?
Mr. Anderson, we will not, we will not have that discussion. If you have something different, you may speak to it, and at that, and then your time is up.
With that, ma'am, I respect that with no answer to these questions. I respect that.
Yes, sir.
It was questions only, you didn't have to answer. In concluding, Mayor, when you was elected first female, first female mayor, and black at that, we as a community was impressed. When former Mayor Henry Cottner appointed Ms. Lynch to the position of assistant chief of police, the community was impressed, because this was the best thing that could have happened for the city of Bastrop. We witnessed the best of the best. To me, I felt the criminals would be on the run. Who was I kidding? Who was I kidding? Bastrop criminals are having fun, knowing the type of police department Bastrop has for many years. Now, with no chief and a dysfunctional police department, who are we kidding, Mayor? City council members? I ask you, Mayor, to appoint the chief of police with true fairness and honor. I ask this board to take a bigger stand to protect the lives and property of the citizens of Bastrop. The Bastrop city is naked without a chief, and the criminals are having fun. Good evening. The Bastrop city is naked without a chief and the criminals are having fun. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I don't see Ms. Pat Peppers and Ms. Jean Kilpatrick cleaning of ditches and edge and sidewalks of East Cypress Street.
Pat Peppers, 4549 Dewdrop Road. I'm here, Jean, you're not, representing Keep More House Beautiful. At this time, we have taken on East Cypress Street as our project, our goal for this year. And we're asking the town if they would please go and clean and edge the sidewalks on East Cypress and cut back any tall grass and improve the approach to the, uh, Delta Nursing School that's fixing to go in at the, uh, Learning Center, I understand. And we would appreciate it. And at the time, I don't know what district that's in, so I don't know who I should be talking to, but I, I approached y'all tonight for this.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Peppers, and, and our crews are working as hard and as quickly as they possibly can. Mr. Will, hi, is Mr. Will, hi, do you? He left. We're working as quickly as possible. Always feel free to call the office to get on the, the schedule, 283-3301.
All righty.
Or any one of the, the numbers and you will be put on a schedule and we will address your issue at the appropriate time. Thank you, thank you for.
By the way, I live out, uh, South Washington and I want to compliment the town on the little small park, Clark Lee. It's nice to see it's clean and you can look across it and it's a nice, beautiful view now. So thank the town for that.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, resolution, that's item D, Resolution 21-1973. A resolution commending Amanda Hall upon retirement with the city of Bastrop. Ms. Goldman.
Mayor, uh, Amanda had worked for the city for 28 years and she decided to retire and we're so happy for that. So we are wanting to wish her with our, our resolution. I, I was sad, but I was happy for her. So, uh, yeah, she's been here 28 years, so I, we're learning to adapt accordingly. We wish her all the best. So if y'all would, please consider this resolution, uh, resolution, so we can give it to her.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We do appreciate Amanda's service to the city and our hearts break for her departure. At the same time, I guess we're having mixed emotions and we celebrate her new beginning. Item E, Resolution 21-1974. Resolution authorizing the city attorney on behalf of the mayor and board of all the persons and for the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to seek an attorney general's opinion regarding the number of votes needed to approve the appointing authority's appointment for the chief of police. Mr. Pierre.
Oh, Mayor, this is, this is a resolution that resulted from last month's, uh, desire from this council. Uh, the attorney general's office would not accept it unless that was in the resolution form and this is the next meeting that you had. So all this resolution is doing is, uh, saying on behalf of the mayor and the board of all the persons, you are empowering, authorizing me to seek an attorney general's opinion in the scope, which, in the scope which is represented, uh, on the resolution.
May I make a motion?
A second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pierre. Uh, item F, Resolution 20-1975. Resolution authorizing changing the date of the November 2021 meeting of the mayor and board of all the persons from November 11th to November 10th.
I make that motion.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Pryder?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Locke?
Yes.
Mayor, it's four to one.
Motion carries. Item G, Resolution 20-1976. A resolution of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into a contract with Volkurt. Did I say that correctly, Sandra?
Yes, ma'am.
Volkurt, in, in Corporation formerly known as Denman Engineering Company, to provide professional engineering service for master agreement for Morehouse Memorial Airport. Ms. Goldman.
Mayor Denman had come a few months ago and said that they were, uh, had signed paperwork to merge with this new company. So we, they handle all our engineer, but mostly our airport is a big project right now. So, um, they've done an amendment to, um, take over that project. So we ask that y'all consider this to vote.
Okay, they have assured us that there won't be a lapse in service and we still have the same engineers that we have become so acquainted with down through the years. At this time, I will entertain a motion on this Resolution 20-1976.
Mayor, I make a, I make a motion that we accept them as their new engineering company.
Yes, sir. Properly moved?
Second.
And second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item H, Resolution 20-1977. A resolution of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to waive the monthly sewer use fee increase for the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 due to COVID pandemic. Ms. Goldman.
Mayor, every year we're, we're supposed to go up according to our agreement on our sewer bond that we borrowed money in 2012 and that was to service the debt. In, in the month that we end up voting on people's water and the franchise fee, I think it was Ms. Moore brought it up first and all the rest of them was there, that y'all didn't want to go up on the franchise fee because y'all wanted to do, you know, do what you could to help the citizens and the local businesses. So we did a resolution to say that, uh, this year we're not going to increase again. We didn't increase last year and if y'all vote, we won't increase this year.
I'll make that motion.
And so this is what this is. This is just putting, uh, no increase for this year.
I'm sorry, Ms. Goldman.
You didn't hear, Mr. Green? I do know that you have to leave. I know you have to leave, so I was, little humor. At this time, I will entertain a motion on Resolution 20, uh, 21-1977.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
A second.
Properly moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item H, Appointment of Assistant Clerk. We have with us Ms. Monica Austin. I know you are familiar with Monica. She has history. Would you come to the front, Ms. Monica? I know you, you're trying to hide back there. But we appreciate Monica's, uh, service to the city. How many years has she worked, Sandra?
Fifteen and a half.
Fifteen and a half and, and we do need experience as we replace the assistant clerk. So it is my pledge.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, properly moved?
Second.
Can I finish, Mr. Green? Okay, okay, properly moved?
And I second.
And second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Austin. Did you want to say something?
Thank you and the council members. I appreciate you.
Thank you for your service to the city.
Do we need to say that?
Okay. Okay.
So that, so that we can be clear on the record.
Yes, sir.
When the appointments are done, uh, at that first meeting in July, July, it's the, uh, assistant clerk and tax collector. So we want to make certain that that is clear as what your intentions were with this appointment.
Okay. Thank you for, thank you for that observation, Mr. Pierre. And that brings us to the item J, Appointment of Morehouse Sales Tax Commission. So with that appointment, Ms. Austin, you have another job. And at this time, I will entertain a motion for the appointment of the Morehouse Sales Tax Commission and that's Ms. Monica Austin. Sandra also, uh, serves.
Some of.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item K, Delinquent Occupational License. Ms. Goldman.
Mayor, you're in your packet. You've got some businesses that's delinquent. We've also put the years on there. We've done everything we can to get those people in. Just so they all know whether they did something with those businesses.
Okay. Mr. Pierre, you want to weigh in on that with the delinquent businesses, the, the best approach to, um...
You know me, Mayor, I'm a litigator.
Uh-oh.
You can always, you can always take legal action, i.e. file something in the district court. Try to force them to do what they need to do. But oftentimes, if, if we, if we file a pleading against them and we ask the court to issue an injunction from them doing business, normally that gets their attention. So, uh, if you all want me to, I'll, I'll take on the painstaking, uh, responsibility of calling each of them and giving them, uh, sending them a letter, rather, advising them that if, if you all are going to ask me to do that, uh, that if they don't pay it in 30 days, I'll have many, how much time, a reasonable period of time, 30 days, I think it's reasonable, uh, that we would, uh, take action included, but not limited to asking the court to issue an injunction from them being able to operate.
Can we reach out to them, if we know?
I'll take all the help I can get.
Okay.
But I mean, if you all, if that's what y'all want me to do, make the motion.
I think that's a good idea.
You know, I'll, I'll take the lead on it.
And document it.
Okay, okay. Uh, I think the friendly approach. Have we determined how many have actually closed that are, are delinquent or?
The ones that's left there, we, we can't prove that they're closed.
Okay.
Now, some of them, we know without a shadow of a doubt, they're open for business.
Okay.
Not coming in.
Okay.
That's ridiculous. They don't need no more time.
Probably Mr., a letter from Mr. Pierre will probably get those serious to come on in and then the ones that don't, we might come in.
Okay, okay. So that's an administrative item that does not require any action of this board. It's just raising the awareness of, of some businesses that are operating without, uh, a license. Thank you. Okay, liquor license. Ms. Goldman. Uh, we're going to take these individually or, uh... Assistant Chief Reed?
Read them out.
Okay. Assistant Chief, do you want to take them individually or just go through the whole list? What's your preference? What is your preference?
I was, I was going to go ahead and.
You want to read all of them? That's okay, Mr. Pierre?
Absolutely.
All right. Go ahead, Assistant Chief Reed.
All right, I recommend the following establishment for renewal of licenses in 2022. Uh, number one is Porter House Liquor, 1851 North Washington Street, Class A. Number two is Supermart, number two, 1920 North Washington, Class A license. Number three, Sis U Packet, 1630 East Madison Avenue, Class A beer only. Number four, Stop For You Incorporated, 1920 West Madison Avenue, Class A license. Number five, Super One Foods, Class A, 2111 East Madison. Number six, Specialty Daquirous, 1923 North Washington Street, Class B license. And number seven is U.S. Tobacco Outlet, 1414 East Madison, Class A.
Okay. Assistant Chief Reed, you found everything to be in order with these businesses?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
All right. And it is your recommendation that we approve these licenses?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the liquor license listed.
Properly moved?
A second.
And second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Goldman, have we covered everything? Okay, all right. Before we depart, let us just pause for a moment of silence in respect to Ms. Amanda Hall's husband. So if we would, let's just pause right now. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
Properly moved? And second? All in... Okay, is it, is it an announcement, uh, just strictly an announcement? Because typically to expand the agenda, we have to go through a, okay, the council, okay with?
I just found out about this today. The Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a luncheon November the 8th for State Treasurer John Schroeder. I have sent out invitation, well, invitations go out, so you'll get it, but November 8th, the State Treasurer John Schroeder at the municipal center.
November 8th?
Yes, ma'am.
What time is for? At noon 12 noon?
You'll be getting an invitation.
Okay, all right. And so that...
Get it on your calendar and everything.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay, where were we?
Adjourned.
Adjourned.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.